We're going to take this opportunity to get started. All we're doing is talking about the supplemental budget hearing here. So with that, I want to thank everybody for coming to listen to the supplemental budget hearing. And with that, who do I turn it over to?
Yes. We should have some information regarding the supplemental budget that we are proposing. This is in order to appropriate to increase the funds for Measure 98, which implemented new funding across school districts for career and college readiness, for career and technical education, and for dropout prevention and increased graduation. So the legislature didn't know how much we were going to have as we were budgeting. And being somewhat conservative, we chose to wait until we knew. And the funds that we are proposing for $175,000 are shown on an attachment like this, your resolution. That was sort of an estimated budget of how we would allocate between the different programs, instruction versus support services versus community services, as they are all a piece of the Measure 98 funding plan. And we have just convened an advisory committee to help us really truly budget. So these numbers will change sort of based on what our community-based plan is. And if we establish this budget, then we can move within the different program areas as we develop that budget. But we would like the authority to recognize this full amount of funding and start to plan accordingly. I would answer questions from the board and then take public comments, and then we would just close the hearing without a vote. We'll vote during your regular business part of the agenda. Oh, and again, just also to note, because this amount exceeds the amount, the percentage of those funds, that's why we have supplemental budget hearing rather than just a board budget adjustment.
So do we have to approve this twice? Once in the budget committee and then once more in the meeting?
No, we don't approve it at this point. This is just for your questions and public comment.
Okay. This is probably a question. How much of the plan is done at this point? I mean, a big piece of it is Avid, right?
Yeah, so Avid is a part of it, but we have a committee that is meeting. We have a couple draft plans that have been shared with us, but again, we want to make sure that we get input from the community, the stakeholders that are going to be involved in that decision-making. So I would say we're going to have a plan probably the first of the year, at least an initial plan moving forward of what that looks like with the committee. So again, people have been working just, you know, whether it be at the high school or obviously we did start and move forward with Avid for the, really for the middle school part because we are allowed to do 15% and, or correct, 15% of that can be used for high school, or excuse me, for middle school. So some of those pieces are put in place, but there are still some others that we really want to work with both staff and community to make sure we have what I'm going to call a sustainable plan that goes past should this money go away. Because I'm also, I mean, asking the committee to be very intentional about that as I learn and continue to learn about the Oregon funding stream and how it works. And I just want to make sure we have sustainability so we don't have to cut and add and cut and add. So that's really important as we work through this process.
So maybe this is a question for Dory. If we just did Avid, how much are we talking about?
Dr. Vickery, can you come forward, please?
I love it when I get a chance to make you hear.
You know, Dawn. Okay, your question again, please.
Was just if, I was just trying to get a handle on how big Avid is, whether that's like $100,000 or this, or is it 200, or do we have a sense for that yet?
So currently, we've spent just over $70,000 implementing Avid. The expense in Avid is professional development. It requires their summer institute, there's a membership, access to their curriculum. The strength in Avid is that with your Avid elective class, you start to fill in more classes, so you don't have near as many electives. So once, it gets cheaper each year of implementation, but I would say we're probably looking at $150,000 for Avid. And then we'd have the rest of the money. And like Dr. Kivista was saying, there's pockets of things that we are doing, and my job next week is to bring this committee together and say, here are the different areas. We have to cover these three. Our plan is not due to the state, I think until June.
A plan for this year?
Yes.
But we need a story to start spending on it.
So then the plan will be presented to the board mostly to get all the community input.
Correct. And again, has to cover dropout prevention.
That's how we're going to do it.
Right, right. Avid does fit the requirements of dropout prevention and college ready. So then we'd be looking at CTE, and we've got a couple of excellent proposals come forward from the high school. I've been able to do some research, and it's fascinating. We'll look back to 2007, 2008 to see what we offered in CTE and then what was cut. But we also want to survey our students. We need to have a student voice in this project. Other questions? Has the committee already been formed? It has. Then? Mm-hmm. It has. It's starting to meet next week.
So how's the board get feedback or input into that process?
Okay, so technically, you're supposed to be a board member on this committee, so I need to talk to one of you tonight. Our committee actually is made up of the City of Independence. We've reached out to Western Oregon University. We have other partners in the area with representation. It started out to be very, very large, and we just kind of felt like we needed to scale it back to put this together and make it reasonable. And we also want it representative of our community and reflective of our student population.
So when is your committee meeting?
Next Wednesday, afterhand.
Next Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah, next Wednesday.
Not down for the.
No, no, a week, probably.
One week, yes.
Okay.
Looks like Peggy isn't going to be on.
She's not here.
So what time is that?
I believe we set it 3:30 to 5:30.
3:30 to 5:30?
Mm-hmm. So those of you that may have backgrounds in technical areas, there are a handful of you that might. Just if you're interested, because we know that there are a handful of you that do have that background and expertise, so we would be open to one of you being involved in that process. And we'll reach out to you. Other questions?
So we're looking for a motion.
Nope, we're just public comment.
Oh, this is just public comment?
And then you would close the hearing.
Any other public comment? So at this time, I'm going to close the supplemental budget hearing. And we'll bang the gal again, and we'll start our meeting. So I'd like to call the November meeting of the Central School District, 13 J to order. And Jerry, he lives in the Pisces.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, again, thank you for coming and welcome to the Central School District Board meeting. Comments from the community are entertained during the time designated under Communications Public Comments. If you wish to speak to the board, please fill out a comment card and turn it in to the Board Secretary, Adrianne at the desk over there, or the Board Chair at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' comments in this form are limited to three minutes, but the Board welcomes additional information in writing. Personnel laws prohibit the Board from hearing public complaints about an individual in an open meeting. All complaints must go through the Board's approval process, approved process, as outlined in Board Policy KO. This form may be found at our website or by calling the district office. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the Board review and issue. However, the Board Chair or other Board members may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey to the speaker some information that addresses their comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like to receive follow-up communication, and if so, what avenue is preferred. And thank you for your attendance at this meeting of the Central School Board. So would you like to?
Is there any cards? Three of them.
Yeah.
Any comment cards?
No. So just real quickly, there is an adjustment to the agenda. We added an item to the business agenda focused on our second reading and adoption of the animal district facility. So I'll talk a little bit more about that, but I do want to say that that has been an addition that will be in, and it was set just on your table next to you, and we'll reference that in the business section of the meeting. And we do have a slight change in the consent agenda as well in regards to employment, so that's there as well as a reference.
Now? What do we go next? Do we want to postpone the comment section since we're starting about five minutes earlier than normal to allow the ASBAC, or do we know if they're not coming?
I believe they're.
ASBAC is coming.
Yeah. Can we, do we want us, do us, we can either pause, or maybe we can have if our representative unions would like to speak on that behalf and let them go first if they have information. If not?
Does that ask?
Yes.
All right. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for a few minutes of your time. So when I've done this in the past, we sit there, I sit there, and I can talk to you, but this time, we're going to have some visuals. Because maybe, well, we'll leave this here, and you can display it or peruse it as you wish. My name's Jason Golchek. I teach third grade at Monmouth Elementary.
And I wish that I could teach first grade at Monmouth Elementary.
And we're a team now, so we're going to work on this together. So the first thing that I wanted to point out to you is the reason why a lot of what we do is successful, I think, at MES is this first part right up here. I think we have a great leader, Kim, and the staff, you know, we all get along, it kind of goes along with conversant trust, communication, I think we seem to do that well at MES. And so it's a great place to be.
Yeah, so we talked to the staff at our last staff meeting and got emails sent out to just see what they were proud of that was going on in their own classrooms and in their grades. And these were kind of the things that popped up at least one time. So the first thing was, we just did the Fall Festival, and that was a good event between the PTA and the teachers. We had a lot of kids show up, lots of families, lots of teachers donated their time to be there and help with the kids, and they did crafts, and pumpkin bowling, and cookie decorating, and a bunch of fun stuff.
And we also had, I'm going to skip down here to Jogathon, which is our big fundraising event every year. And it's a great success as usual, but there was some divine intervention this year because that day, it rained like I've never seen rain before, all the way up until we got to the gym to go out on the field, and the sun came out, and it was blue sky, and as soon as we, everyone got back in the classroom, we don't think. It was the weirdest day. But anyway, that was a great success, so we raised a few thousands of dollars. I don't know exactly how many, we're still counting.
And then the chess club is something that was started last year by one of our teachers, Martina Machoa, and she's really excited. They doubled their numbers this year, so they had about 20 students last year, and this year she has 40 students that are staying after school to play chess and competing with each other and learning the game of chess, and just they get to compete against other schools eventually, so she's really excited about the progress they're making there.
And in third grade news, still visiting our old folk friends at Brookhaven, and they love it. It's a great way to get out once a month and read with them. We just took a trip to U of O last week, went to the stadium, and they have a great art museum there, a natural history museum, and they, I had to put the Picasso picture there, a real Picasso there, which is pretty amazing. You should check it out.
Yeah, and kindergarten's really been, I mean, we have GLAD right here with a bunch of pictures, but everybody's really been embracing the GLAD. You see the posters in every classroom, and those strategies are really being utilized. And the kindergarten has been learning about community helpers, and they have been everywhere. I mean, at least once a week, they're taking the time to go on a walking field trip, getting to know the community around them, so that was something that they were really proud about, was just getting back Realia and getting the students to experience what it looks like and what those jobs are.
And our PBIS intervention program we have at MES, Positive Behavior Intervention Support, big success. We have lots of swim tickets being handed out, and the day was so full, we had a movie day last week. I mean, it's just like, wow, amazing, and the kids had a great time, so.
It was on Halloween, which we were all thankful for. And then in first grade, we've been talking a lot about appreciation and how we can show appreciation in our community, and so the first graders have been working on letters to the veterans and pictures, and we're mailing those this week, so they're doing their final drafts, and they also learn about the editing process and the different components of a letter, and what it means to write a letter, and what it means to honor people of our country, so they're really excited and proud of the work they've been doing there.
So these are just a few things that have been going on at MES. I know there's a lot more than that, but I think we can see. So do you have any questions, Jean?
Can you maybe put it on that tip over there?
Sure.
Thank you.
No question?
Remind me again what swim stands for. I saw it once, but I can't, I didn't register.
Yes.
Save students.
Working responsibly.
In control.
And making good decisions.
More of a quiz here if you ever come by. I'm sure you will, and I'll probably fail, but I'll learn from it.
You will learn from it.
So are you going to leave that so everybody can look at it after our meeting? So that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to show the camera for a second, or you put it on the table, just pause.
Let's just zoom in on it, just keep. All right.
Hi.
It's got started a couple minutes early, so we took stuff out of order so that you guys are following instead of leading this time.
Thank you, Board. We just have a quick report this evening, and Denise Chase, President of OSEA, and this is Jordan Cusler, my separatist. So a couple of things. First off, we started off with kind of a fun event this year. The two unions decided to have an evening together because we decided that we, you know, kind of actually do like each other. So we had a night where we blocked off a section of the football stadium, and we supported our football team at senior night, and it was a lot of fun, and we've talked about maybe doing some joint supportive adventures, other activities throughout the district, so it's not just about supporting sports at the high school, so we'll be looking into that, and that was fun. OSEA is looking at taking over the local movie theater for an evening, and there may be some invitations going out for that, but we're just trying to spend some time getting to know each other, building those relationships, which is something that we're working on as a district. And so we're trying to come up with some activities for that. We have several classified employees from our district this year that have applied for scholarships. OSEA has scholarships available for folks to attend various PD events, and they can receive up to $400 for those, and this year we've had several people apply for those. So we're looking forward to seeing what kinds of new information comes back from that. We've also really been encouraging our classified employees to get more involved in various committees throughout the district, and I think that this year, more than any other year, we have a number of people that are using their talents and really getting involved in various levels of the school district, which is really good to see. They're no longer just happy being quietly in the background, they're realizing that they have some talents that they can use for the betterment of our district, so I'm excited to hear, to share that. Jodeen is going to share a little bit. We had some folks take part in the Google Summit in Happy Valley, and she was one of the people that attended that, so Jodeen, if you want to share a little bit about that.
Ready to go? Okay. There are four of us from town, we've got to go up there. Usually, we get to stay in the office at all times, but we got to skate. And so we went up to Happy Valley, went to Rock Creek Middle School, and spent a day up there, October 13th. And it used to be a free program. It cost $50 this time for us to go, but it was really awesome, and they do classes throughout the day, and it's just all kinds of different tools for education that, it's not long enough. It just is not long enough. But they, it was really, really awesome. They provide a lunch as well, and then they have a rock-up activity as well at the end of the day. And it was really nice to be able to go up and be able to do that. We've done it, a couple of years we've done it when it was free too. There was hundreds of people there. Sometimes the classes are so crowded, you're just standing in there, and it's hard to get that learning in there. But it was really an awesome opportunity for us to be able to partake of that, enjoyed that. Sharon Lacy was the speaker, and she was a former teacher who has been experiencing, yeah, I can't remember. Her parent, her mom, has been going through, went through dementia and losing, you know, not being able to remember anything, and several members of her family as well. And so she didn't want to lose that either, and has always wanted to be a comedian, and so she decided that that's what she wanted to do as soon as she was a full-time comedian. And so she travels everywhere and goes to Africa as well, and works with kids over there too. And so now she is a full-time comedian. She spoke at our conference this summer as well, and so it was really fun to have her be the speaker there at the Google Summit too. So she's phenomenal. If you ever get to listen to her, you'll really enjoy her. She is just, she, being with the education and stuff too, yeah, she's hilarious, so it was really fun to listen.
And then just as a quick note, we also attended a summit this last weekend. As I'm sure all of you are aware, we're looking at a big battle ahead for unions, at least in the Janus versus Appsmee case, and the Supreme Court is going to be hearing that. And we expect a decision sometime between January and March, and frankly, we're not expecting it to go in favor of the unions. So we're really working hard to educate our members on what that could mean for not only our district, but districts around the country. So that's something we are really going to be putting a concerted effort out in informing people about that. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, we had a first like really busy month, I mean, October. So fall sports got wrapped up. We had soccer was our, probably boy soccer, most successful team. They finished with their, they finished their playoff game, but their championship season, their league championship season with a record of 11, 2, and 1. So pretty solid, they beat Corvallis, knocked them off the championship. Football and volleyball barely missed the playoffs, kind of a bummer. We did our part, Dallas didn't do theirs. Girls soccer had a good season. The highlight was beating Dallas, like every other sports. Going with the play on Saturday night, a lot of people were there, over 500 people were at the play on Saturday, so that was pretty awesome. That was a really fun play, really funny. The ASBAC class just got back from OASC, Oregon Association of Student Councils, today, this morning. That was really cool. We did a bunch of workshops, guest speakers all weekend, had a dance. That wasn't really the highlight, but it was pretty fun. And then we are looking ahead, we're having our senior Thanksgiving luncheon, annual luncheon, on the 22nd, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and we're just getting everything in check with that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, ladies, you're up. Time for the power viewers.
I'm Naomi.
I'm Delaney Follado. And my name is Rosalinda. We want to give you an update on the power peer class. On the 12th of October, we launched our year-long mental health awareness videos by showing our alone video that we made with the Lake Mid Valley Suicide Prevention Coalition. We had a fantastic response to the video. Every student received one of the handouts during the lesson, and if they're going to be passed out, and yeah.
Last Friday, we had a school-wide lesson on child purpose. From the PN and Power Mentored Students filled out a purpose call to identify their goals and set many goals to fulfill their purposes for community school. This is one of the purpose calls. We would have liked to give one to each of you, but they're heads that were on us, were really popular, and unfortunately, we don't have any left.
And the Panther Pantry is up, and we have a lot of students using it. We also had an outpouring of support from the community, and I'm going to be, I'm part of a small group of power peers. We proposed to present it on the State of the Union Meeting to see if we can receive some funding for some drugs or effects for students who are in need of this thing. And our classes also started while we're chairing a community resource center across the street from the high school on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
On this past Saturday, the power peer class and some of the students from the multicultural multicultural club attended the Ivy Leadership Conference in West Salem. The focus was on learning listening and communication skills. They also showed our video in the afternoon during the panel discussion session, and four of the power peers sat on the panel. It was a great leadership opportunity. We were able to meet students from all over the Salem area and had lots of fun.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to add to that, so if you don't know, the video alone is actually up on the front of the MyNet. I got a, I received an email from their director asking, who do I go to get approval to put it up, because it was such a powerful video. So I thank you all for the work you are doing with awareness as it relates to mental health, so very much appreciate, appreciate that.
I was a part of Lily's Hope. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, a girl, 14-year-old girl committed suicide and blew my mind. And I knew her aunt very well, and they showed that video before the run and walk this year. It was pretty amazing. Other school districts are taking those, which is really awesome.
You guys are awesome. How do you not say you're awesome? So Karen, you're up.
Good evening. I'm Karen Harlow, After School Program Director. So in August and September of 2017, the Omabell Central was tasked to provide a local evaluation that included both internal and external evaluators. evaluation that included both internal and external evaluators to the Oregon Department of Education. And it was part of a federal requirement for 21st Century Community Learning Centers. And so in collaboration with OregonASK, we hired OregonASK to be the external evaluator. And then our district, myself, and many other community partners also put together surveys, staff surveys, parent surveys, student surveys, teacher surveys of our program. And it turned out to be about a 60-page report, but 30 of those pages were DRA scores, so let's just call it about a 30-page report, really. So what you have in front of you is that 30 pages condensed down to the best that I could do for the four years that we have been operating programs. And there have been a lot of positives, there have been a lot of challenges. I'm going to start with this year. So we are in year five of our five-year grant, and we continue to serve almost 300 students a day in all five of our schools. The challenges have remained the same, I would say, as far as our biggest challenge, which is an internal and external observation, is community and family engagement. Getting families to events, engaged in the after-school program. We've seen improvement in that. We have the most volunteers, as far as parents, that we have ever had. And then one way we are trying to increase that engagement is we started a reading buddy volunteer program with the high school students, primarily juniors and seniors, who need to complete their hours of service for their personal learning plan. And so, so far, we have 10. We're in week six of our programs this year, and so far, we have 10 of the high school student volunteers who have been placed just at the elementaries. And it's going pretty well. It's mixed feedback from site coordinators. I consider it all good, because even when students, those students are vetted before they go down into the elementary programs. The expectations are made really clear with them by Teresa Henderson, our high school site coordinator, and she is also our district data and sustainability coordinator. And she does a great job helping those students understand what the expectations are. So even when there's areas for growth, which there always will be, we see that as a positive for a learning opportunity for them. And some of those students are finding out that they really like working with kids. So, anyway, 10 volunteers in that area. And then just a couple of our clubs that are really popular, the 3D Printing Club this year at Towneage. Dave Beetley is a kid magnet. He could do underwater basket weaving and those kids. I mean, it's really fun. That club is on Thursdays at about 4 o'clock, if you ever get a chance to go into Mr. Beetley's room at Towneage. I'm amazed, because I don't come from the tech world, and so watching him, those kids are locked in. He has Chromebooks for every one of them, and the stuff they create through the 3D printing is pretty amazing. Clubs at our elementary programs, everything's popular at elementary. I can't think of one thing. One purchase we made this year that's an addition is Osmo Coding Jam. And so I have always been challenged to introduce more health and music and art into the programs. And so through this, we already had purchased iPads and the Osmos. We already have all the bases for that, and so we just added the Osmo Coding Jam. And so kids can create their own jams bought through coding. That's also another really neat thing. So if you ever drop into after-school programs and you see these kids on these electronics, they're actually learning a lot and having fun, which is great. So, any questions about anything that's in the community impacts report that's in front of you?
What are your total numbers like this year, Karen? Are they total numbers of participants after school? Are they...
Total numbers are between about, about 270 kids average, I would say, so far.
How's that compared to last year or the year before?
It's a little bit lower, purposefully. So typically, our goal is 60 students in the elementary programs at each elementary site. Last year, we averaged more in the 90s because of the Power Hour program that we added, because of our reduced staffing this year, because of our reduced funding. We have held our numbers a little bit lower, just to see what it was going to be like. Because one of our biggest challenges across the board, doesn't matter, it's in all five schools, is to have consistent behavior expectations with our students. And one of the reasons it's a challenge is because it's five different schools. And so even though, as a district, we may have the safe, responsible, respectful, basic expectations, to have 85% of our tutors are college students, so to have the staff implement that at each school is very challenging. And so we purposefully started out with lower numbers this year. We have room to grow. We have waiting lists, and we continue to visit that every week, so. Any other questions about...
Just a kind of general question. You said OregonASK was involved in the assessment. Did we get any feedback from them as it relates to... I assume they have sort of a broad perspective on what's going on in after-school programs across the state.
Oh, yeah. They're great. Yeah, we got a supplement to our report from OregonASK. In general, OregonASK talked about the leading indicators for 21st Century programs, and there's four main leading indicators. And it's staffing, collaboration and partnership, intentionality in student program offerings, and intentionality in family program offerings. And the area where we are challenged the most is the intentionality in our family program offerings. We do family nights, and those are well-attended at the elementary levels, but to get families engaged at the middle and high school, unless we tie it in with other events, it's really difficult. And we usually do tie it in with other events for that reason.
Were they able to offer any, or you should go see these people, they're doing a good job of this, kind of help, or not so much?
Actually, the family, drawing families and communities in is a challenge across the state. It's not uncommon. And yes, OregonASK, they never give you feedback without also giving you resources to improve your programs.
Any other questions?
So I'm just going to share a couple of things out of this report really quick. Whoops. I have me not quit.
All right. You go.
One more?
Yeah.
Okay. So when the grant was written, one of the concerns amongst community members and the school district was the crime in both Monmouth and Independence, specifically juvenile crime. So Monmouth Independence Police Department's got the data when we, for us, of juvenile crime arrests between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 p.m., which is when our programs run during the school year. And they have, those arrests have been on a steady decline since actually 2012. The graph of that is in the local evaluation report, which is made public. I have it. If you guys would like to ever come in and visit about it, I would love for you to do that. I'm pretty impressed with that statistic. You can just see it consistently go down in both Monmouth and Independence. So that's been from 2013 to 2017, that they compiled the data for us on that. And then one of the, one of the data pieces we did not have was anything for Towneage Middle School as far as assessing our students. Like at the high school, we compare students who are regular attendees, which means they attend the program 30 days or more throughout the school year. At the high school level, we compared 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade attendees with their peers, so 9th graders versus 9th graders. And the GPAs of students attending the PAC is higher in every class, that pretty significantly higher in every class than the general population. So at Towneage, we, this is preliminary data that we just got, and it's out of, it's out of Power School. And we're looking at 6th, 7th, and 8th graders, the average number of class periods missed, because that's how they report absences. And as you can see, the general student body misses 69 average class periods in a year, and BTPC, regular attendees, miss 49 on average. So, and that's, that's really it. Other than that, we impact lives every day.
I just want to add to that piece of it. Again, you talk about engagement, so a lot of times it's, we're wanting to grab and have students engaged, again, either in programs within school or after-school. So again, I think that the Towneage data is telling of when kids are engaged in other activities. Even though they may still struggle in a class, the fact that they feel that engagement at school, if they're in attendance, obviously 20% more.
Yeah, because they can't come to after-school programs if they haven't been in school, so...
So what happens next year?
That's a great question, Dawn.
We are. So we are in that process right now. I've asked Karen, she's out gathering some information from the principals, and then we're going to continue to work through to build that plan as well. Our goal is to hopefully have that to you guys as initial plan as we start looking at budgets, obviously. There's other pieces. I know Karen's going to be involved at a conference where there may be some new or additional funding. We don't know that yet, so we're still working through some of those pieces as well. Again, you all know I'm a big believer in extended learning time, so I know that this is going to be a big conversation for us as we continue forward in our, in the school district.
So Karen, I'd like to thank you and all your staff for doing that.
Yeah.
These numbers are awesome, and it's all because of the staff. So make sure that you let them know that we love seeing all the stuff that happens in the Beyond Development program.
Yeah, I will, and I do. Yeah, I was just going to say, just hearing like what's going on with CTE and Measure 98 and AVID, I mean, I can't help but think that there is a connection there with, you know, somehow, I mean, tiny houses, I've been, anybody rich, Rich, he's heard all my dreams about what we could do with tying in after-school programs with some of the other things if we collaborate in areas. So I'm all for it. And the conferences, November 16th and 17th, when we will have a lot more information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me share.
You're up.
Thank you, Chair Mozer. In your packet then, just for informational purposes, the financial report this evening has three things for you. I won't go into detail again unless you have questions. The financial report is our first one of this fiscal year, so the quarter, it includes the months of July, August, and September. It's a detailed financial report, meaning it includes the line item objects in our general fund only, and gives you a sense of where we are with our revenue and expenses. I had a couple of notes there about variances, something that might look a little bit out of line, and we'll certainly take any other questions about that report if we have any. Gee.
I always bring...
Mr. Love, I'm shocked.
Just want you to feel like you care.
Thank you. I do love it that you read my report. I spent a lot of color detail on it.
I was just looking at things that were different than roughly 24% to see if there were any areas where we should be concerned. And one that stuck out a little bit was additional salary being 56% spent. Is that something, are we going to run out of additional salary? I assume that's for, like, coaching stuff?
Those, right. So those are stipends for the most part. And there are some additional things we had put in there, a lot of that is professional development hours and things like that. A lot of that happens upfront, right? In those summer months, summer weeks before school starts. Those are included in there as well.
So the other one was mostly a curiosity question. How do we get away with not spending as much as we're supposed to on social security with Hulk?
I cannot tell you. I have not looked into that. I shall if you are. No. I, that is a calculation in our payroll, and, yeah, not much sure exactly what it's tracking, that or the other required payroll costs, which is workers' comp. So not sure why those are not tracking like that. Yeah, we have to go into the formers. So...
I'll just give off the rest of my circle.
Well, we can always have a meeting in Mappus. Anytime any of you would like to go into this in detail, I'd be pleased to answer questions. Anything else on the financial report? My next inclusion is the quarterly risk management report. And again, just a note about the variance. This is also for the first quarter, the current year for the first quarter, but my variance note actually refers to last year, that the auto physical damage increase, both incidents and total dollar value, reflects a difference in reporting thresholds rather than increased risk. And that was true last year. So off to our first quarter start this year. And again, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Does the workers' comp graph, is encouraged, and that's up close?
Doesn't it look lovely? Yeah. Yep, yep, back on a better trend for that, so. Appreciate, again, that increased attention to injury and risk. We did, for example, we had identified a, a couple of years ago, we had a sort of a sharp increase in slips, trips, and falls kind of accidents. So we actually were able to include an online training module that goes out to all employees on slips, trips, and falls, just kind of a quick reminder about how you look out for those hazards. And so hopefully that stuck a little bit. We'll improve some of those very specific trends that you see. If there are no questions about that, then I'm actually going to turn it over to Alex Singer to do the service. And there is a financial report included in your packet. And that shows our, that's our revenue as of 6:30. Kind of wanted to show you where we ended up the year, which Alex will take no credit for. But now you have a baseline, right? So you get the next one that shows his watch, he'll be able to ask questions. But he has a couple of other updates for you about food service.
Good evening. Alex Singer, Food and Restaurant Director. You can see in the states, the financial statement for food service, we've finished out last year ahead of the previous year. Our revenue was up 3%. Our expenditures were... Our expenditures were only at 1% is a better way to be. Our fund balance is improving, and our net income more than doubled by the end of the For a few other topics, the lunch shaming bill, which I'm sure you may be familiar with, the big problem in this country with child hunger and shaming children for what may be not their fault is a problem that's finally really being addressed nationally. Have we taken that here? We are no longer providing a separate lunch. In the past, if a student reached a $5 debt limit, they would receive an alternative lunch, and we are not doing that anymore. The students are... I would assume they're treated the same. My personal feeling, who discussed this, you know, every kid's going to eat, no kid's going to cry. We're going to make... It's not the kid's fault if mom or dad doesn't give them their lunch money. So we are taking that stand and moving forward that way. We are looking at a different option and ways to help reduce the debt of some of the students. We have a draft together of a benevolent lunch fund. We do have some people in the district that donate to different schools to pay off students' lunch balances that their families can't afford or are not able to pay it off. So we're trying to organize a kind of a concerted effort to reach out to the people that are interested in doing that. We're most of the way through with that, and I'm sure you'll see or hear a little more in the near future. And in other news, it's not listed in there. We are part... We joined the Third Annual November Breakfast Challenge for the state of Oregon called Let's Do Breakfast. And it's a challenge to increase breakfast participation in the morning. Lunch participation is pretty steady. Breakfast participation is generally lower because a lot of kids eat it, complete it at home, or they maybe want to play in the playground in elementary school instead of coming in to get some food. So this is a way for us to help increase kids to get in there, maybe have a little fun. We have a new breakfast item and food promotion. We have something on the Facebook page, and we're hoping to increase participation for students because we know that the more students have a full stomach, they're a bit more ready to learn. And the top four districts in the state, or top four schools, excuse me, in the state that have the highest percentage of increase from last November will receive cash prizes.
I assume we're not allowed to offer doughnuts for breakfast?
We do. We do have whole grain, whole grain doughnuts.
Yes.
And even a whole grain, we don't call it a cookie, but it's a breakfast round.
Breakfast bar.
Yes, it's a breakfast bar.
On a more serious note, on the shaming issue, I guess I was just trying to get a handle on how many kids does that really affect? I mean, how many people are not qualified for free and reduced that end up not being able to afford a regular lunch? Is that 5% and 1%?
We have a number of students. I couldn't give an exact percentage in that format when I get it to you. The number of students, percentage of students that are having negative balances increasing, the free students are minimal and the reduced students are a little bit. The vast majority, I want to say nearly 80%, are all paid students that are maybe close to the cut line, but, I mean, I take a look at the applications, there are families that miss either free or reduced lunch by $5 a month. And, you know, to say that that's, those parents have a better suitor than someone who makes $5, less of mine. It's a pretty tough call. Yes.
I'm just going to add to this. This is a topic of conversation that is going on right now, and so I wouldn't be surprised, especially those of us this weekend going to the conference. I'm sure there may be some information. I know that it has been a pretty big conversation in the meetings that I'm currently sitting in. As Alex has said, you know, we are tracking numbers because we think it's important to know where we are. I think, as you can see financially, we're in a very good situation, but it is a topic across the state that is getting looked at, both, you know, in school districts, but also legislatively, I will say, as well. So I think we will be coming back to this topic again in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just have two pieces, just information. This is just really our procedural pieces, because we are going to do later in our meeting just hopefully the adoption of our, the ING policy focused on animals in district facilities. So what you have in front of you, and I'm going to give great credit to Ms. Howland back there, our Director of Special Programs, for really working and also working with our legal counsel, but also looking at around our areas, other school districts, and what they have implemented. So this is our draft. We'll continue to work on this. Again, it's, there's nothing I need you all to do, it's just information for you as we continue to move forward, hopefully tonight with the approval and adoption of that policy. So this would be the AR that our students and families would complete for us to really have that process in place so we know truly that we have servicing the holes and we are abiding by a fault our policy, and then have information, really background on the animals, et cetera, and the families so we move forward. So thank you, Ms. Howland, for that work. And then I'm going to, the second piece is focused on, as Alex was just up here, we do want to make, we are making a change in the reimbursable school meals and milk program. But I want you to specifically flip to page six for me, which is the last page of the AR. And you can see on number seven specifically is where the language change will be as we stated. So it now will say all students will be served the same meal options regardless of negative balance amounts. And then again, it removes number nine because we felt it was important. So this was, again, this was one of the policies that we had approved in July, so we just wanted to make sure that now the AR matched with what we are moving forward with. So again, I just, that was just quickly for me, that is all the information I have for you from me today.
Do we know how many animals we have or expect to have?
Right now, she's looking and telling me zero.
Oh, okay.
But I know that there are handfuls of, that we have had some inquiries about, and so we're starting to work through that.
We pre-digged out policies.
Correct. This is, that is correct.
As you look at the upcoming board activities report, we have that vote that we need to do for the nonprofit, the OSBA vote.
And you have...
So if you remember correctly, OSBA boards need to do an approval for OSBA to become a nonprofit. When Steve and I met with, at the regional meeting with OSBA and several people, just talking through of what is this effect? And this again is focused on if we were to have charter schools in our school district, that they would have to actually contract through us to get services through OSBA. Right now, because of the way the format is, OSBA, they can do it separately, and charters can work directly with them. But because of some of the situations that OSBA is going through and moving towards a nonprofit, from their business standpoint, it's a better shift. While Steve and I were at the regional meeting, we did ask those questions of, you know, tell me liability-wise, what are the things that might come into play? Obviously, it doesn't affect us right now because we do not have a charter-run school in our school district. But again, it is a piece that we have to just be aware of because, again, there's nothing that we saw, at least in the information that was shared, that is going to put us in a very difficult situation should we have a charter school that would open up here and then obviously contract through it. The downside is more work for us on the district side. That's probably where, if there is a downfall, it's just our staff having to process contracts and different things of that sort with the charter schools. But again, I think that's part of doing business in the, in the school districts, of some of the stuff that we're just responsible for. So should that be the case, again, I'm looking at my staff, I know that's just something that we would have to figure out how, how to do that.
That should be like a once-a-year contract.
Correct.
Once and if we ever have a charter school.
Once a year and if anything happened.
Yeah.
If anything happened.
No, again, they're still, their liability is separate, so none of that comes to us because that was one of the key questions I asked, is I, as we make this choice to either, you know, the board to approve as yes, go ahead and move forward as a nonprofit. I was more concerned on are there any ties for us to them from a liability standpoint? It really truly is for services.
So basically, the contract would be a contract with us that said we were going to deliver services through to OSBA.
Correct.
We'd sign that off, and then OSBA would work with them, just like they work with them now.
Correct.
Wouldn't be a huge...
No, it shouldn't. I mean, like I said, that's the, if there is a downside, that's a small...
See, small. Take care of that in her spirit.
Yeah, yeah.
What is, what is OSBA looking for? They're, they're looking for us to vote in support of them becoming a nonprofit. Just a way to motion.
Yeah, so because we only have one November meeting, they were requesting votes in November. If you need more time, I'm sure that we can work with them in regards to that, but it is a, they were looking for. Again, theirs is November, the end of the month, obviously, so it's just difficult for us. But I can reach out to them if you guys do want to take on, if there needs to be more discussion.
We did do, we reached out to legal.
Right, yeah.
We reached out to legal, we talked to them during the OSBA meeting, the regional meeting, and so pretty much we, we felt that the i's were dotted and the t's are crossed on, on this. And I'm not sure in, to informing the nonprofit, it's for them, gives us an opportunity to apply for grants and stuff is the impression that I got.
Which could be more funding towards us potentially.
Yeah.
I know that for sure, but I...
That's the, that's the only thing that I could get out of that entire conversation of why they wanted to change it. So...
So I will flip a promotion.
Yes.
I would move that we resolve to be in favor of OSBA transitioning to a nonprofit.
Okay.
Close enough.
Yeah.
Sound good? So thank you, Don, for the motion, and Jerry for the second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next thing I want to remind everybody about is the upcoming board meeting in December is on the 5th, but don't forget, we're going to have a retreat on that Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00. So the board meeting is going to be on Tuesday? On the 5th or on Tuesday?
Yes.
Sorry, that is a, we will, it is the 4th. It is the 4th. We're in Cats, Gary.
And the conference is this week in Portland, so everybody can be prepared to go up there. Adriana was nice enough to get us all, I believe, into the Marriott since the first time that we've ever gone up there. That is awesome. And that's...
Yeah, it'll go, it will be, I should say 9:00 AM. We may not go all the way till 3:00, so again, I'm working with Mr. Moser on the agenda. So we'll continue to... Yes, we are going to be down here.
So you have behind your papers, there you have the agenda for the conference. And that brings us to the consent agenda, I believe. So you will see the minutes, and...
And the personnel action was an addition, so it's not in your packet. Just going to add it to the, the one in your packet.
So we got, there's an additional push in regards to, from a retirement standpoint, yes, we just got notified one today.
So they have, we'll have three down here then?
No, the two that are here, we had one originally.
Okay.
So we might be out of order and ask a quick question, how are we doing on staffing? Are we able to fill positions more than we're okay?
Both of those positions are retiring, effective from persp, contracting back with us for the remainder of the year. We'll be looking at replacing those positions in the spring for next quarter.
But otherwise, I have to agree. I don't, I see Lisa's stuff go by, but I don't keep track of how many open positions. Or we were, we don't have a lot that we're trying to fill.
No, we're, not in our licensed staff, our classified staff are a constant turnover. But those don't come through the board.
Sorry.
So we've approved the consent agenda as presented in our packet? We have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the personnel things, and it was seconded by Darcy. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. And so we have some motions that we have to take care of.
And so the first one is, as we discussed, this is where we now take a vote, so I'm going to turn it over to Cease again.
Have to cease again.
So in the front of your packet is actually the business agenda item regarding the supplemental budget to account for Measure 98 spending. So that includes the suggested action, the board, we would like to propose that the board approve the supplemental budget as presented at the hearing, and there is a suggested motion.
We're talking this one?
Correct.
Okay, so...
I move to approve supplemental budget as presented in increased appropriations to grant student funding from $300,000 to $475,000.
Now the motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconding back on, thank you. Any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's fun to have money in the line item that we were supposed to be spending since September.
Well, we've had money appropriated and...
I know, we're spending money we don't really have.
We were spending money we had appropriated, we were fine, but it wouldn't have gone on the rest of the school year. Hopefully, we wouldn't be spending our money as appropriate on another day. And then the very last item in your regular packet this evening is a budget transfer. This was, is to correct a budget line item for that famous boiler system for Ash Creek Elementary, which I understand is working like a charm now that they've had a few cold days to try it out. And it was incorrectly placed in the instructional services budget instead of the building maintenance fund budget line item because that amount is less than $10,000, or 10% of the total budget for the general fund. We do not have to have a budget hearing on that. That is out of the discretion of the board to, to transfer those funds between appropriated items. And I will entertain questions on that. Otherwise, we suggest that you approve the budget transfer, which is a net $0 change in total appropriations.
I move to approve the budget transfer as presented, moving $100,000 from $1,000 to $2,000 in Fund 100.
Second. So it's been moved by Steve, well, and seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay.
Last, last item. So again, this is just our second and hopefully final reading of the policy tied to service animals in district facilities. So I am recommending that the board approve the adoption of policy ING service animals in the district facilities.
I move to approve the adoption of policy ING service animals in district facilities.
Hi, second.
Moved, moved by Steve and seconded by Darcy. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Is there something you want to do? Any comments? Comments from board members?
So our next meeting is the retreat.
Correct. Yeah, then you will receive, like I do, some, probably some pre-work as always. So that will be coming here shortly. There's a little bit of time before I will send that to you. So.
Make sure it has a lot of policy reading in it.
There could be, yes, there could be a lot of policy reading in this for sure. So.
So anybody else got any comments? So I just want to say how great it is to have a awesome staff throughout this whole entire district. We got so many things going on and everybody stays so focused on, on getting stuff done. I've had the opportunity to be in several of the villages with the superintendent. We've been electing the folks from county.
And now we have.
But we've had too many, too many other meetings coming up. But everywhere we've been, they look at us when we walk in the door and they go, "Thank you guys for coming." So they're happy to see us. So if you guys have an opportunity to stop into the schools and go in and have lunch, you know, it's, it's such a welcome atmosphere. Alex, I want to thank you for being the, the food dude. So I think it's, it's going really great. So anyway, that's all I have. If anybody has anything else.